Good evening, this is a meeting of the City of Lake Butler City Commissioners Day 17, 2021 at 16:00. Commissioner State, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Dees, Commissioner Sermon's here. Commissioner Redmond.
Here.
City Attorney.
Mr. Mayor.
City Attorney here. And so, Mayor, John Chan is here. If you all would please stand to live in prayer and applaud that we play.
Heavenly Father, blessed this meeting today and all go present. We pray right now that you and your son will glorify in how we conduct ourselves in the business manner for the community and the city of Lake Butler. We seek your guidance in our decision making. The freedom to speak and make sound and wise decisions that will be for the benefit of all citizens of Lake Butler. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Well, the leaders through the life of the United States of America, included the government of Richard Chan. One nation under God, indivisible, with every intention of us for all.
You have approval of the agenda format? Does it move?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The Senate of Florida Statues, members of the public should be given a reasonable opportunity to infer on a proposition before the City Commission. On the recognition by the mayor, the person may address the City Commission on any subject, either included on the agenda or any other subject. Speakers are requested to approach the podium and give their name and address to the City Clerk to be reflected in the minutes of the meeting. Remarks are limited to up to four minutes. If additional time is needed, the City Commission may grant the time needed. Unanswered and directed only to the mayor, who is she will determine this staff need to interact. This is the time for the public expression on any subject, on or off the agenda, as the remainder of the meeting is for the Commission interaction. City Commission wishes to maintain orderly conduct and proper performance. The public members so thank you for the time and attention. Anybody? My friend there, you want to talk about the trailer?
Yes.
There's your time. Come on up here to the podium and please state your name and your address.
Brady Jackson, 605 Parkway, Thrace Street. I got a piece of property in East Lake Butler, there's been some thing on one. I thought we missed a number earlier, and she's supposed to get back on him while this property has been resolved. When did it start being resolved? Do you ever come up with anything on that?
I think I remember the issue, but the reselling was in the back in the 90s.
Okay.
And that's what area we're talking about, we're talking about over there about Coral Falls?
Down Coral Falls.
South of Coral Falls?
Yeah.
That area is residential single apartment.
Okay, well, then I'm trying to get it to be a residential single two. Twenty-five feet from the front, fifty feet from the back, and ten from the side. And I got a copy from the property clerk. This property has been granted there since 1970. It's rent property.
Well, the reselling, the City Attorney may be able to help me. When the city gets reselling, that's an empty lot. And also, that lot is only 100 by 100 feet. The reselling is one minimum size in that area. To build on is 20,000 square feet. It's only 10,000 square feet.
It's already been rent property in 1970. It cannot be resolved if it's already been rent property in.
There's a dish boy. It's not sharing the open house. Second, they'll come.
I don't get what answer I need to take, what do I need to take?
Uh, you're right.
Alright.
Anything else? Anybody else? Consider agenda.
I make a motion that will prove the intent of agenda included in act upon the one motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, election of officers. The time has come for the officers to like the mayor to surrender to the City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As always, what were the big nominations for the position of mayor? After any nomination to receive, or all nominations to receive, any member can move to close the nomination. I think that there were nine. The nominations are closed for the only minute or five more nominations. So, this time, are there any nominations for the position of mayor?
I nominate dead thing.
Are there any other nominations? Is there a motion to close the nomination?
I'll make a motion to close the nomination.
Okay. During discussion, all the motion to close the nomination. If there's no discussion, all in favor of closing nominations, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by like sign, motion carries. Mayor, congratulations, you want to start? I'll sort it. I'll send it back to you for the selection of vice mayor. Okay. I hope that you can do that, should get a little bit. I'll do that. I'll do that. Are there any nominations for the position of vice mayor? Any red? Are there any other nominations? If there are no other nominations, is there a motion to close the nomination?
I'll make a motion to close the nomination.
Is there any discussion on the motion to close the nomination? If there's no discussion, all in favor of closing nominations, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by like sign, motion carries. All in favor of the nomination of the Vice Mayor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by like sign, motion carries. Congratulations.
Vice Mayor, congratulations.
Well, my world.
Okay.
Okay, moving on. Special presentation, Sarah Campbell, Commander of the Town of Orange Door.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. My name is Sarah Campbell, 2042 Carb Apple on Park, Florida. It's my pleasure to be here with you tonight. I have a nice and familiar basis from the League of City Diners. We've been here to your community many a times. I've never been to your city hall though, so this is a great pleasure and a beautiful space, and should be very proud of it. The reason I'm here tonight is on behalf of the Florida City and County Managers Association to present you with a certificate. The Florida City and County Managers Association is a membership group for all the city managers in the state. Mr. Walker is a member. And we follow really the umbrella of the International City Managers Association. I brought with me a copy of our Code of Ethics to give to you, and I'll read from it now for you. It says that "The mission of ICMA is to create excellence in local government by developing and fostering professional local government management worldwide. The further this mission, certain principles, as enforced by the rules of procedure, shall govern the conduct of every member of ICMA." So I'm not going to read through these 12 rules here, but these are the Code of Conduct for all professional city managers to follow. And that's what sets apart city councilman forms of government from other forms of government. You have a professional city manager who is credentialed, who's dedicated to the ideals, and he follows the Code of Ethics. And it sets the tone of your community apart from other communities because of that. So I will share this with the clerk if you all have the copy. And then I have a certificate of recognition. And this is to recognize your longstanding commitment to the councilman form of government. The Florida City and County Management Association celebrates the city of Lake Butler on the 25th anniversary of your city's recognition by the ICMA of its operation under the permission and manager form of government. Awarded August 17, 2021, signed by Boris McHugh, President of the Florida City and County Managers Association. Congratulations, this is for you. And I'll be mayor if I can present it to you, and maybe Manager Walker out front. Thank you.
Financial reporting period ending July 31, 2021.
Okay, you read?
The financials that you had in front of you represent the 12 months. It's just weird. Overall, all the funds are performing, spending closely, but it didn't extend for the next 12 months. Any questions that you can page to do? Finally, this is the one.
If you all agree, you should look at it. No question?
I'll make a motion to accept the financial reporting for the period of October 1st, 2020 through July 31, 2021.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion for questions? Okay, we have the force of number five, ordinance number 2021-04. Ordinance of less than sexually oriented businesses. This will be the first reading. It's where the last month we had presented this, the concern about the raised massage parlors and the hook that, I mean, now it should be in the words of the town. I'll get through it eventually. The county attorney should be ready. Yeah. Should we just make an election?
I make a motion that will prove first reading of ordinance number 2021-04. Am I right? About time. About time, all.
Ordinance number 2021-04, an ordinance of the city of Lake Butler, Florida, to regulate the location and operation of sexually oriented businesses in order to promote the health, safety, and general welfare of the citizens of the city, and to establish reasonable and uniform regulations to prevent negative secondary effects of sexually oriented businesses within the city of Lake Butler, Florida, offering and providing severability, fulfilling all ordinance and conflict, and providing effective aid.
Do we have a second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next, we have a motion to vacate the right of way. This is why, unless I'm mistaken, this right of way is located over there off of 238. Head south on 231, on the right, on 238. There's an empty lot, and then there's a long rectangle building, and right behind it is a piece of property with a arable house that's slowly getting refurbished. We have a piece of right of way on the south side, on the hill on the south side of that building. It's about 15 foot utility right of way, and there's no utilities in it. Okay?
I'm trying to follow where you're at.
Okay, Vernon's house over there on 238. There's a about 15 foot right of way, east and west. According to our diamond maps, there's one there with the dirt.
Sounds right.
Anyway, Mr. Bruce says appeal to the city, the city to abandon that portion of the right of way, because that would give him a piece of continuing property between his existing property and the piece of property he had to his estate possession to be buried yet.
Normally, on these kind of requests, we're given a legal description of the property, whether the property is preused or used, or the title or the market. It's normally the statute of extension of description, made for by the applicant. It may need of Mr. Bruce to give him a description, which will be sufficient for him. You then put it in a resolution form, and then you have a public hearing on this. And if approved, it's a record in the public address of the town. And if he wants to be here, that property, he can hear, you know, both sides of that right of way?
One and two. I think this will be here, after that.
Okay. This, when you vacate a right of way, one half goes to the other property, so if the other side of it, you can follow. He's in the process of doing it, he's surrendering. He's still, I don't know, he'll show you a little bit of all.
Oh, you haven't done yet?
He's in the process. He just, I can do, I can do a resolution, I just have to have a legal description. And I don't need a full survey, a sketch of the description will do. If he goes to see Bruce, Bruce will probably just leave. And then Aldo was, that probably the definition, and he would make a public record. And maybe it's recorded in the public records. And then Bruce gets the deed, and the public justice record, according to, I said to him, we don't need a revolution. Mr. Bruce wants to be, he didn't use the fair one, he needs the, I think, the fair one for them. And the city, we've got, we've got paper.
Okay.
It's all human duty.
Well, Bruce can tell him what's in there. Well, he'll know what's in there. He may be able to give him the description, I don't know if he's got it all.
So, we give it to him, or we purchase it?
Give it to him.
No, we just give it to him. Put it on the back door. And then we fill the back door. 300 to the maker probably won't make a lot of difference, but every 50 cents, but every 50 cents.
Maybe that's something, of course.
Yes, that's true.
Yeah, I guess, well, do we need a, do we need a motion to do, or would, uh?
If there's any objection to the idea of doing it, it would be nice if someone would voice that objection. Other than that, I think another one, somebody, I think, would want to do. But if someone had some issue with doing that, then why not just have them talk about it, because obviously, one side would have involved, and then, yeah, it would be better than, I don't know.
No issue here?
Okay.
Let me just, if you have enough to do, I mean, more, more of the instances of, that the, uh? That's true. Number seven, ordinance number 2021-09 is an ordinance regulating arcade amusement centers and gambling. For what's working, this ordinance is a request of arcade enforcement, because as some people may have seen in the paper, things happen in the start, there's, there's criminal activity that becomes attached to some of those arcade, amusement, or cafes that become gambling and damage, and they want to give ahead of it. The customers also would like to give ahead before it becomes a problem. They've already closed Gondal several years ago, and they've come up here on Main Street. And that's why I request this is a tool, a law enforcement tool to contain.
I'll make the motion to approve first reading of ordinance 2021-09, to be read by the panel.
Ordinance number 2021-09, an ordinance of the city of Lake Butler, Florida, to regulate the operation of arcade amusement centers and gambling for general welfare of the citizens of the city, and to establish reasonable and uniform regulations with negative secondary effects of arcade games and gambling within the city of Lake Butler, Florida, offering and providing severability within all ordinance and conflict, and providing effective aid.
Do I get? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Moving on. The City Attorney has come up again. If you all have an opportunity to review the later on the issue, and you see that there's four or five recommendations that have been passed, there's the mission to let it take. The rewrite the contract several different ways, the request proposal for regular services, and the cost of the question, the proposal for regular services. Another option, contract, $300 an hour, with no container fee, and all of that is on the table for the Commission's pleasure.
If I might just briefly address the history of what my contract is. I assume the attorney in 1984, and at that time, I had an hourly with the Tandler. And that was discontinued with Richard Killis being the city manager, because I didn't pay someone salary, because I was doing the time. When Mr. Killis left, and that was, and then after we were in the building, I don't know if we were in the building for a long time after that we became the, Mr. Birch stole between the managers. When Mr. Birch stole between the manager, I then wrote a contract that called for $700 a Tandler, and $150 an hour for services. That contract remained untouched until Mr. Walker became the city manager. He increased the Tandler by $50, and the hour of the building by 15. What that means is that probably since, well, probably for more than a decade, probably about 12 years, my contract has gone one minor modification. In the meantime, attorney rates, city attorney rates have increased dramatically. And at this time, my container is $800, all cities that represent, they were paying. And the other cities that represent, they were paying $250 an hour, which is a little insane. The mayor of La Crosse did a study, when I asked her to reconsider my agreement, she wanted to do a big study. And that is still toward the bottom end of what attorney charging. But that's the history of how I came here, and the reason I'm requesting that, anyways. I know that we use outside counsel on a couple of issues, and they need their problem charged, and the neighbor of $300 an hour to $450 an hour. Is that right, Mr. Walker? So, $250 an hour, I think it's still worth it, it's a bargain. I haven't come to the council for much, for much over here. Actually, I didn't even request the increase that Mr. Walker, the gentleman recommended to the Commission before. And, but, but, but the rate had not changed in years and years. He suggested here possibly a renewable three-year contract, that is, would be three years plus three years. I'm happy to do that. Of the four options, I really prefer the first option, which most, most resembles the arrangement that I have with my other municipalities, and the arrangements that I've had with the city of Lake Butler, since I've been the attorney, except for that regulation under Mr. Killis.
So we're currently paying you $800?
Right. $165 an hour.
You need to vote me on it.
Well, you can, you can, like, because it happens with the decision, with determining if you want to put another people in a position, or you're dissatisfied with the application of the city mechanic, and if you'd like the, you like the patient on the show, the road to be, and make, I would, I would really respect that motivation. So yes, a motion, a motion to go with option one would be certainly acceptable to me. And then we just want to, you know, I make a motion, except option one. I made a motion.
Oh, I made my own call. Is that it? No? I didn't make one?
Oh, no, are you asking a question?
I got a question. Okay, sorry about that.
Ray made a motion.
Yeah.
More a second.
You didn't raise something.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
That's actually what I mean, is, uh, your draft and your current draft.
Right. If, if the Commission opposed to a renewable three-year contract, would you be entitled to, uh, firm? Because that'd be.
In 2021, or in 2024, right?
Doing three now, and then there's, that kind of.
One.
What does that be? Renewable annually, renewable for about three years?
Three years. I think that was Mr. Walker's intention, uh, two threes, if you're in two days.
So when was that?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven, twenty-one.
Long, long ago.
Okay.
You might, should have the record of what the motion to that, it'd be a three and three.
Yeah.
And the motion, I'll do it with that, yeah. It'd be three and three, what we probably said by then.
And I've already.
That's what option one says.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's what I was already about that time. We're good.
We're good. Thank you. Thank you, Mark.
So let's move from that garbage to waste water. Solid waste. The solid waste contract is up. And Mr. Walker, it's a real big investment, right there.
Okay, it's not up until 2022, right?
It's not up to the spring of 2022, and I'm just making aware of that, if that's what you want to do, go off the bids, go off and go for an RFP. But I talked to GFL, which was WCA. They would love to continue on, and they've already got some figures, presented us a very similar little value.
Did the issues go away concerning the damage industry?
Yeah, where they've, they've contributed money for the last three years.
So they didn't anymore?
We've got one set aside for that, which is probably 40.
I don't believe it's happening.
It's a, I can do it. So, that's just to tell you that it's on the horizon, so. And was there a discussion that they'll continue with that property? They would like to eliminate the contribution, basically keep the residential rents the same or similar to what they are now, and then increase the promotion a little bit.
Increase the what?
Commercial. Which for the citizen, probably would be pretty good because our check time is very slow. We've been working the last four years, not the last five, which is at the same rate.
Yeah.
I think that's probably pretty good. Anyway, that's on our horizon. Hey, yeah, the grant for the purchase of land for the Westmore program. Mr. Ray, you have an amended agreement on your desk. Doesn't really need council action, but it can. Basically saying that the Swanee River Water Management District, the DDP, are ready to give us $400,000 to purchase land for the Westmore program. It's just the Second Amendment. The first one was they gave us three million, now they gave us four hundred.
Okay.
Three million was for the design, and it's four hundred is for the property. We're getting close to hopefully in the next, I just mean, sign the next meeting, have it all paid for.
Dan, was that something that I had to sign?
No. It's just a wire.
Okay, I'm just going to let you go, right?
Yeah. Out of number one, community development, excuse me, community development block grant. We're applying for a mitigation funding from CDBG, about $2 million. Challenge is going to be, we need to have this four-factor analysis for limited English efficiency and just adapt it as we... We don't have anybody because we don't, we don't exceed that oral translation we require. We still have to adopt it. This is a CDBG part of the grant. I'll look at the data, the question, the third, the four factor analysis. I'll make a motion to approve the four-factor analysis.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion passes. Dean Henderson, panel?
Mr. Ray, this is under pressure by the Rotary Club to donate $5,000 for the fireworks display or Centennial, the green building, the hot building. Current budget reflects thirty-two hundred, so we donated our council green building, donated a community center. So we would need a budget adjustment for that eighteen hundred dollar difference.
Unfortunately, I realize no one was here for one or two, one or two hours, but makes from the recollection, I like what's our expenditure before the fourth of July. Because we didn't do, which was closer to five thousand. So I want to adjust what we were having in mind. Should we, we need the budget, what's actually...
Yes, we did, we did a budget adjustment. The budget adjustment went from three to five thousand. So we seem to be delivering the money.
Okay, I make a motion that we adjust the budget from thirty-two hundred to five thousand for the interior of the town. From the city, what the city...
I'll say it.
All in favor?
Favor for a mini excavator. Somebody has to do something really cool. We, we have a grant for a mini excavator and that should be coming in in September. And we sold a lot of surplus equipment that's generated $1,200, $300. So we're looking to buy a trailer for all of the mini excavators. So the tiny process, anything, the facilities and all of the stuff. I'll make a motion to approve the quote on Texas trailers for this $5,690.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash ten. This is an ordinance, it was actually, I would say, amendment to exist in ordinance that regarding parking in City of Lake Island. I guess you all have a chance to review it. We've, we've got, not, it would be wrong to say throughout, so we have, we have some areas within the city where there's a problem with right-of-way speed obstructed to the point that through traffic is delayed, obstructed, excuse me, and a solution to that because, because the problem areas, the areas where vehicles are left to park for days, weeks, in some cases, months on that. A solution to that problem, I think, is in this ordinance. Because it prohibits parking on city right-of-ways between the hours of eleven to six a.m. for more than thirty minutes. And of course, enforcement would be up to the sheriff's office. And if the ordinance is passed, people wouldn't be blindsided because areas where it would fly, there would be signage from both directions for that block home. Because the way the ordinance is written, the signage, you can't do it for four or five blocks, it's each block stamped or not. It would, it would help out down the lines, streets being obstructed. It's another tool, a tool to go to the sheriff's office.
Well, I make a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-one dash ten by Todd O'Callaghan.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-one next ten, an amendment to chapter forty-six, streets, sidewalks, and other public places to regulate the parking of motor vehicles within the City of Lake Island, Florida for the safety and general welfare of citizens of Lake Island, offering and providing severability between all ordinances and conflict and providing effective data.
I'll say it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hey, Department of Environmental Protection, state evolving clean water, ash or ash drain. Mayor, we've, we've been notified that we are approved for a $1.2 million grant and loan to design the main service collection area for wastewater. Remember, a month or so ago, Midtown was here to talk about the service area. So all about the sewer lines that are connected, how poorly they were. DDP has heard that and said, we'll give you $1.2 million to get it designed, ready to go, $200 an hour. Another big step in our infrastructure. It'll, it'll come back here in another month or so and you'll have to approve the law document. Usually it's for one percent for that. Number sixteen, city manager of the town, motion. Uh, I always, this is what we've done the last three years. This just tells you what, what we've done. And it's kind of fun to look back, but Dr. T said the secret change is to focus all our energy, not fighting the old, but the new. So we don't look back, we look forward and gather we're building that new idea, that framework. So you all have been extremely valuable in that creation. Number seventeen, that's where she numbered twenty twenty-one, there she was. Fusion, utility rates for the coming version two and F four. That's just the rates for twenty-one, twenty-two. We talked about that in the first part of August. Basically, it's a ten percent increase. Almost about four cents a day. I noticed, while I was looking at it, I noticed basically it goes up quite a bit, but there's other areas where the usage rates actually increase, which I guess helps overall in the lesson. It would be a much, much easier resolution. Do you mind if I question that? Question, I'm questioning the third, the exact resolution number twenty-one, there she was.
Mayor, I want to, you want a second?
No, I need to read, I need to read. He made a motion. He made a motion.
Okay.
Uh, Ray Batello, resolution number twenty-one, twenty-one dash you have seven, resolution increasing of charges to the water wastewater and solid waste, this would be a twenty twenty-one, twenty-two.
All in favor?
I need to say it.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
For, uh, for the water, the wastewater, the waste, the water. So last year, the auditors broke out the water wastewater and solid waste. The prior years have had one plant, it's a proprietary plant. Before they had it broken out, they had three separate plants only, it's a luminary. Well, they did it this year and they took all the money from the water plant, put it in the wastewater, which effectively is going to affect all of our loans and our grants that are backed out of the water. So my request is to shift it back to $50,000 from the wastewater, to the water, where they moved this out of there. I'll make a motion to transfer $150,000 from the wastewater fund to the water fund.
Say it. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
American Rescue Plan, this is the amount of money that we're going to get from the coronavirus global fiscal recovery fund agreement. It's nine hundred and three thousand, five hundred and forty. They will have half this year, half next year. Can only be used for specific things and it's very narrow. And we recommend that we invest in, invest in the infrastructure, keep building. We won't have to seek other grants or other debt.
Well, roughly, we'll be getting about one...
About four fifty this year and four fifty next year. That line, such it can be used for all infrastructure, that line can be used in part to pay what it could afford. And now, they're not going to let you do that part. They will, they'll let you replace those stations or, or tanks, they're not going to pay loans. Or whatever, somebody that handles it. Cause the line, yeah, specifically for the... Yeah.
Okay. You need to work like roll, like roll, like roll, no?
Yeah.
Okay.
And they specifically talk about water, wastewater, what's going on there.
Make sure I'm saying this. So we need to make a motion to accept the money?
And to use it for infrastructure.
Okay. I make a motion that you accept the money from the American Rescue Plan Act and authorize the city manager to kind of document and be used for the infrastructure.
Say it.
Of the local.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay. Report, the senior term.
I don't have any additional pen.
You do. And the city manager. You have my monthly report and we're in the process of getting ready for a public hearing for the budget. It will be September fourteenth. Fourteenth and then adopt on the twenty-first, something like that. We're looking to, once the weapons get done, gets done and do deal with that, so you're moving into making that structural. The water meters are all in, grants booked, and we successfully walked away from that. Other than that, that's all I got. Congratulations, Sean, if you got any further questions, say it. Mr. Ray?
Uh, I make the farm share should be September the...
Eleven.
Eleven.
Second, second.
The second, yeah. They were, um, they were sorry that they were unable to make it this month, but had other agencies come through for this month. This city, I mean, I think the people were able to do...
Yeah. The meeting that's posted, um...
The church and ritebook, getting something and the Christ century.
Christ century.
That's all I have.
Mr. Breezy? Mr. Steele?
I have nothing, sir.
The only thing I've got is, is anybody, if anybody, does anybody, who lives inside the City of Lake Island, preferably somebody who runs the city, would have any interest in serving on the historical preservation board. Would you please refer their name to me? I'll be willing to communicate and talk to them, let them know what it's all about and hopefully gain some interest. We have three people, we do five. We get five or more in rest quarters, then the city manager will bring that to the council to vote on the increase of this for the appointed. Other than that, I've got that. All in favor?
Say it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Hey, we got a picture.
No, we got the science, we got the science.
There's a picture, third and fifth. And we got a shot there.
Ow. Just lost that. Okay, okay. I need to point you.
I can't, I can't.
You got these here.
You sound like you need to walk. Like, I just don't like to write out something. As a, I don't know what you like. I didn't do no, we didn't take no notes. I took me, I'll be out somewhere.
On charge.
Oh, okay. You just don't know, you're right about like what they just, what we just...
I got the magic.
Cat, the, the, the...
Yeah. I'll give you a gift.
I don't give you a gift.
Okay. Free, you got to know that it. Cat, why?
Thank you. I, I got, please sign. Ross go.
Now we got that. You got break?
What's the picture for Mary? What's the picture, just?
Memorializing this year's new officer.
Okay. Who's taking a picture?
Doesn't really matter, does it?
No, just want to say somebody's family wants.
Oh, heck.
Yes.
Yeah, buddy. You're welcome. Yeah, yeah.
Yes, play.
They should figure you're gonna take a picture.
I forgot, I forgot the camera.
You're the media.
You don't take pictures, you may know.
Yes, for another one.
No, I'm wondering how the camera.
Good evening, this is a meeting of the city, like other city commissions, that they saw something in the twenty-one. It's sixty-one. Commissioner State here, here. Commissioner Bezos here. Commissioner Sermon's here. Commissioner Redmond.
Here.
City manager.
Mister.
City attorney here. Myself, Mayor John Chan is here. If you all would please stand to lower your prayer and follow by the flag.
Heavenly Father, blessed of the meeting today and all those present. We pray right now that you and your son will be glorified in how we conduct ourselves in the business matter for the, for the community and the city of Lakeview. We seek your guidance in, in our decision making. The freedom to speak and make sound and wise decisions that will be for the benefit of all citizens of Lakeview. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
When they leave to the light of the United States of America, we choose the covenant of which is changed. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have a approval of the general format. Does it?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pursuant to Florida statutes, members of the public should be given the reasonable opportunity to refer on a proposition before the city commission. On the recognition by the mayor, the person may address the city commission on any subject either included on the agenda or any other subject. Speakers are requested to approach the podium and give their name and address to the city clerk to be reflected in the minutes of the meeting. Remarks are limited to up to four minutes. The provisional time needed, the city commission may grant the time needed. Unanswered and directed only to the mayor, who is he will determine this staff duty and her path. Then, uh, this is the time for the public expression on any subject, on or off the agenda, as the manager of the meeting, this is for the commission interaction. City commission wishes to maintain orderly conduct and proper performance and a proper manner. So thank you for the time and attention. Anybody?
My center, Jim, and Brad, Eric. You wanna talk about the treasure?
Yes.
There's a time. Uh, come on up here for this podium and, uh, please state your name and your address.
Brady Jackson, six oh five, five with Third Street. I got a piece of property, uh, each Lakeview, there's a front and one. I thought we missed a number earlier and, uh, she's supposed to get back home and why this property had been rezoned. When did it start being rezoned? Do you ever come up with anything on that?
I think I've been thinking about that, presenting it was sent back in the ninety. Uh, and that's that area you're talking about, you're talking about up there about Carwash?
Down, probably.
South of Carwash?
Yeah.
Yeah, that area is, uh, the residential single apartment.
Okay, well, then I'm trying to get it to be a residential single two. Twenty-five feet from the front, fifteen from the back and ten from the side. And I got a copy from that property, Craig. This property has been, uh, granted there since nineteen seventy, rent property.
Well, uh, the, 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 uh, the, the city attorney may be over him. But when the city gives him zoning, that's an empty lot. Uh, and also that lot is only one hundred by one hundred feet. Then the zoning R S F one, minimum size in that area to build on is twenty thousand square feet. It's only ten thousand.
It's already been rent property in nineteen seventy. You cannot rezonate, it's already been rent property in.
Additionally, uh, it's not zoning the local homes. It's not, uh, San Bill homes.
I don't get what, answer, I need to take the, what if I need to take the?
Uh, you're, you're right.
All right.
Anything else? Anybody else? Share the agenda.
I make a motion that will approve the consent of agenda included in act upon the one motion.
Say.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, election of officers, the term must come, the elected elect the mayor to surrender to the city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, as always, what was the fate nominations for the position of mayor? Um, after any nomination received or all nominations received, any member, uh, can move to close the nomination. I'll put the vote on that. If the nomination is closed, then we'll vote on the intended set of four nominations. So at this time, are there any nominations for the position of mayor?
I nominate dead thing.
Are there any other nominations? Is there a motion to close the nomination?
I'll make a motion to close the nomination.
Okay. Um, is there any discussion on the motion to close the nomination? If there's no discussion, all in favor of closing nominations, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by like sign, motion carries. Mayor Shane, congratulations on the nomination. I'll sort it, I'll sort it. I'll hand it back to you. Um, for the selection of vice mayor. Okay. Um, I hope that you do that, should you go a little bit, I'll do that, I'll, I'll, I'll do that. Are there any nominations for the position of vice mayor? Any of Redmond? Are there any other nominations? If there are no other nominations, is there a motion to close the nomination?
I'll make a motion to close the nomination.
Is there, is there any discussion on the motion to close the nomination? If there's no discussion, all in favor of closing nominations, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by like sign, motion carries. All in favor of the nomination of Nick Redmond to position of vice mayor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by like sign, motion carries. Congratulations, Vice Mayor.
I will.
Okay.
Okay, moving on. Special presentation, Sarah Campbell, manager of the town of Orange Door.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. My name is Sarah Campbell, two zero four two Park Avenue, Orange Park, Florida. It's my pleasure to be here with you tonight. I recognize some familiar faces from the League of City dinners. We've been here to your community many a times. I've never been to your city hall though, so this is a great pleasure and a beautiful space. I should be very proud of it. The reason I'm here tonight is on behalf of the Florida City and County Managers Association to present you with a certificate. The Florida City and County Managers Association is a membership group for all the city managers in the state. Mr. Walker is a member. And we follow through the umbrella of the International City Managers Association. Um, I brought with me a copy of our code of ethics to give to you. Um, and I'll read from it now for you. It says that the mission of ICMA is to create excellence in local government by developing and fostering professional local government management worldwide. The further this mission, certain principles, as enforced by the rules of procedure, shall govern the conduct of every member of the ICMA. So I'm not gonna read through these twelve, um, rules here, but these are the code of conduct for all professional city managers to follow. And that's what sets apart, um, city, council manager forms of government and other forms of government. You have a professional city manager who is credentialed, who's dedicated, who ideals and who follows the code of ethic. And it sets the tolerance of your community apart from other communities because of that. So I will, um, share this with the clerk and you all will have a copy. And then I have a certificate of recognition. And this is to recognize your longstanding commitment to the council manager form of government. The Florida City and County Management Association celebrates the city of Lakeview on the twenty-fifth anniversary of your city's recognition by the ICMA of its operation under the Commission Manager Form of Government. Awarded Office seventeen, twenty twenty-one, signed by Boris McHugh, president of the Florida City and County Association. Congratulations, this is for you. And I'll be mayor, I can present it to you, I'm giving manager Walker out front. Thank you.
Initial recording of period ending July thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one.
Okay, you read? At admission. Um, financials that you had in front, who represent, uh, added twelve months of, it's just weird. Overall, um, all the funds of the woman trying to close the project, but it continues to be in the next couple of months. Do you have any questions that you can mention here?
If you all have a chance, you'll get. No question?
I'll make a motion to accept the financial reporting for the period of October first, twenty twenty, through July thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. Say.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion finished. Okay, we have the Florida's, uh, number five ordinance number twenty-one dash four. Ordinance, uh, less of sexually oriented businesses. This will be the first reading. It's where the last month we had presented this, it, uh, it concerned about the, the raise in size far less than we forgot about. I mean, now it should be, you know, the words that, that now. I'll give you a reminder that way. Again, we should preview that, so we don't need to change the, 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 the. We should make a motion.
I make a motion that will approve the first reading of ordinance number twenty-one dash four. All right. That's it. That's it all.
Ordinance number twenty-one, twenty-one dash four. An ordinance of the city of Lakeview, Florida, to regulate the location and operation of sexually oriented businesses in order to promote the health, safety and general welfare of citizens of the city and to establish such reasonable and uniform regulations to prevent negative secondary effects of sexually oriented businesses within the city of Lakeview, Florida, offering and providing severability, fulfilling all ordinances and conflicts and whatever they are affecting.
Do we have the second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next, we have a motion to vacate the right of way. This right, the last one mistaken, that this right of way is located over there off of two thirty eighth. Um, we, we had south on two thirty-one and down to right on two thirty eighth. There's an empty lot and then there's a long rectangle building. And right behind it is a piece of property with a, uh, parallel house that's slowly getting refurbished. Uh, we have a piece of right of way on the south side, on the, you know, the south side of that building. It's about fifteen foot utility right of way and there's no utilities in it. Under it.
I'm trying to follow where you're at.
Okay, Vernon's house, over there on two thirty. There's a, that's fifteen foot right of way, uh, east and west. The corner, uh, diamond maps, there's one here there with the turf.
Yeah. Down there.
Anyway, uh, Mr. Diggs has appealed to the city to, ask the city to abandon that portion of the right of way because that would give him a piece of continuous property between his existing property and the piece of property he had to keep his game possession to be very good.
Normally on these, I, I kind of request, uh, we're given a legal description of the property. I, the property pretty good to use it, but the, 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 I don't really market it. Uh, it's normally taught to use an extension of the description, made clear by the applicant. It may need that Mr. Diggs can give him a description, which will be sufficient for everything. You then put it in a regulation form and then you have a period of no dispute. And if approved, then it's accorded upon the executive channel. And if he wants to be here that property, he can be here. You on both sides of that right of way?
One and two. I think this will be here, here.
Okay. This, when you vacate a right of way, one half goes to the other, the property, the property. So if you have them both sides of it, you can follow. The vision across, uh, should be a, should be a ring, right? He's still, I don't know, show him that and all.
Oh, they haven't done yet?
They're in the process. He just, he, he. I think I can do, or I can do a resolution. I just have to have a legal description. And I don't need a full survey. A sketch and a description will do. If he doesn't see Bruce, Bruce will probably just leave. And then I'll do this, I'll do the resolution, and then it's recorded in the public records. And then Bruce gets the deed, and then the public just directly record it. I say that he can, we don't need the resolution. Mr. Diggs wants to be, he needs to be there one, he needs to, actually, there one for the, uh, in the city. He's not, he's not prepared for that. We have to get this through.
Well, you may come to keep that.
Will be in. Bruce can tell him what to do. He may be able to give him the description. I don't know if he's done it all.
So is, will we give it to him, or we... Of course.
No, no, just give it to him. Put it on the back. Three hundred to the acre probably won't make a lot of difference, but...
Every fifty cents, though.
But every fifty cents, actually.
Maybe that's single portion.
Yes, that's true.
Yeah, I guess, well, do we need a, do we need a motion to do it?
Or would... Uh, if there's any objection to the idea of doing it, it would be nice if someone voiced that objection. Other than that, I think another one, somebody that I think is more comfortable. But if someone had some issue with doing that, then why don't we have to talk about it? Because obviously, once I've been involved, then yeah. It's a tactic.
Let me see here.
Mark, rally instructions and... Number seven, ordinance number two zero two one dash nine is an ordinance, uh, regulating arcade amusement centers and gambling. For what's worried, this ordinance would develop a request of our code enforcement to, because as some people may have seen in the paper, things happen in start. There's, there's, uh, criminal activity that becomes, adds to some of those arcade amusement centers that become gambling and damage. And they want to give ahead. The person who wants to like to give ahead before it becomes a problem. They've already closed one of them several years ago. They're trying to come up here on Main Street. And that's why I request this is a tool, a law enforcement tool.
I'll make the motion to approve first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-one dash zero nine to be read by the top of the line.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-one, dash zero nine. An ordinance of the city of Lake Butler, Florida, to regulate the operation of arcade amusement centers and gambling, the general welfare and welfare of the citizens of the city, and to establish reasonable and uniform regulations against negative secondary effects of arcade games and gambling in the city of Lake Butler, Florida, offering and providing severability between all ordinances in conflict and providing effective behavior.
Did I get it? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Moving on. The city attorney contract has come up again. If you all have an opportunity to review the later on the issue, and you see that there's four or five recommendations of different paths, there's a mission to let it take. The, uh, rewrite the contract several different ways. Request proposal for legal services, uh, and the other request for proposal for legal services. Another option, contract for three hundred dollars an hour, with no retainer fee. And all of that, uh, is on the table for the commission's pleasure.
If I might just briefly address the history of what my contract is. I came re-attorney in nineteen ninety-four, and, um, at that time, I had an hour with the landlord. And that was discontinued with Richard Killis, the city manager, because I lived there so long, so I was trying to do it to die. When Mr. Killis left, and that was, and then after we were in the building, because I had a building, we were building for a long time after that we did it. Mr. Birch told me, the manager, when Mr. Birch told me, the manager, I had a contract called for seven hundred dollars a day, and a hundred fifty dollars an hour for services. That contract remained untouched until Mr. Walker, the city manager, he increased the can by fifty dollars, and the hour, the hour of the building by fifteen. What that means is that probably since, well, probably for more than a decade, probably about twelve years, my contract had discounted one minor modification. In the meantime, attorney rates, the city attorney rates had increased dramatically. And at this time, my retainer is eight hundred dollars a day. All cities that I represent, they were paying. And the other cities that were present, they were paying two hundred fifty dollars an hour, which is a little bit stale. The mayor of Los Angeles said to study, when I asked her to reconsider my agreement, she wanted to do a big study. And that is still toward the bottom end of what attorney charging. But that's the history of how I came to do it, and the reason I'm requesting that increase. I know that we used outside counsel on a couple of issues, and we needed their probable charge, in the neighborhood of three hundred dollars an hour to four hundred fifty dollars an hour. Is that right, Mr. Walker? Four hundred? So, uh, two hundred fifty dollars an hour, I think, still represents a bargain. I haven't come to the council for much, uh, contribution for much over the year. Actually, I didn't even request the, the increase that Mr. Walker, the gentleman recommended to the commission before. And, uh... But, but, but the rate had not changed in years and years. He suggested here possibly a renewable three-year contract. That is, we three years, but three years. I'm happy to do that. Of the four options, I really prefer the first option, which is most, most resembles the arrangement that I have with my other colleagues, and the arrangement that I've had with the city of Lake Butler, since I've been reattorney, except for that vacation under Mr. Killis. Should work currently, eight hundred dollars for the time. Right. A hundred sixty-five an hour.
You need a motion.
Well, you can, you can elect, because they have the position, in some way, you want to look at other people for the position, or you're dissatisfied with the position, because you can't, if you like the, you like the reputation, I would show the vote. And make, I would, I would really like that notification. So yes, uh, a, a, a motion, a motion to go with option one would be certainly acceptable to me. And then we just want to have, uh, do that, I mean, I'll open it. I make motion, and we accept option one. I made a motion.
So then, motion go. Is that it? No? I didn't make one?
Oh, no, are you asking a question?
I got to play.
Okay. Sorry about that.
Rick made a motion.
Yeah.
You have the rate, something like that.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Is that so what that means?
Right. Is, is commission opposed to, uh, a, a renewable three-year contract? Would you be in favor of two, I don't know, turn? Because that'd be...
In twenty twenty-one, or they get twenty twenty-four, right?
Doing three now, and then there's some, that kind of...
One.
Then what does that be? Renewable annually, and renewable for about three years. Three years. I think that Mr. Walker's a bitch. Two threes, if you're in two days.
So when was that?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven, twenty-one.
All in.
Okay.
You might, should have the record, like the motion for that. It'd be a three and three. Yeah. In the motion, I'll do that, yeah. It'd be three and three, what we probably said by then.
And I've already...
That's what option one says. Yeah.
Yeah.
We talked about it already about that time. We're good.
We're ready. Thank you. Thank you, Walter.
So let's move from there, George, to waste one. Solid waste. The solid waste contract is up. And I think Mr. Walker can finish a real new passage for it.
Okay, it's not up until twenty twenty-two, right?
It's not up to the spring of twenty twenty-two, and, uh, I'm just making aware of that. If that's what you want to do, go off the bids, wipe it over in RFP. But I talked to, uh, GFL, which was WCA. They would love to, uh, continue on, and they've already got some figures to present to us that are very similar to what we're doing.
Did the issues go away concerning the managed district?
Yeah, where they, uh, they contributed money for the last three years.
So they didn't anymore?
We've got one set aside for that, which is probably four to six.
I don't think it's happened.
It's a fact of that. So that's just to tell you that it's on the horizon, so we're not going to lose that. Was there a discussion that they'll continue with that? I would like to eliminate the contribution. We're, uh, basically keep the residential rents the same or similar to what they are now, and then, uh, increase the, uh, commercial.
Increase the what?
Commercial.
Which for the citizen, probably would be pretty good, because having direct slow movement, we've been working the last four years, not the last five, we've kept the same rate. I think that's probably good. Anyway, that's on our barrage. Hey, yeah, and a grant for the purchase of land for the residential improvement.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, you have, uh, an amended agreement on your desk. It doesn't really need council action, but it can. Basically saying that, uh, the Saloni River Water Management District, the DDP, are ready to give us four hundred thousand dollars to purchase land, and we're slightly in the land. It's just the Second Amendment. The first one was they gave us three million, now they gave us four hundred, so...
Okay.
The three million was for the design, and the four hundred is for the property. We're getting close to, hopefully in the next, I just mean, we sign next week, we will have it all figured out.
Yeah, was that something that I had?
No. It's just there.
Okay. Now, just in case you don't, right?
Yeah.
Out of number one, Community Development, excuse me, Community Development Block Grant. We're, we're applying for a mitigation funding from CDVG, uh, about two million dollars. The, uh, challenge is going to be, we need to have this four-factor analysis for limited English efficiency, and, uh, we just need to adopt it. We don't have anybody, because we, uh, we don't, we don't exceed that oral translation we require, but we still have to adopt it. This is a CDVG, uh, part of the grant. We're looking at this, just the first, third, the fourth factor analysis.
I'll make a motion to approve the four-factor analysis.
Aye. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed. Green Council, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, this is, uh, we've been approached by the Rotary Club to donate five thousand dollars for the fireworks display for Centennial, the Green County, the, uh, I built it. Current budget reflects thirty-two hundred, so... We donated our council green building, we donated the community center. So we would need a budget adjustment for that eighteen-hundred-dollar difference.
Historically, I don't realize no one was here for one or two, fourth of July, but nice moment, your reflection. I like, much like spending trees, we did before the July. It's what we did, we should, closer to five thousand. So I want to, uh, question, do we have a, make a call? Should we be, we need the budget, also, we did, we did a whole budget adjustment. The budget adjustment from two hundred to five thousand, and the second, we seem to be fairly good.
Okay, I make a motion that we adjust the budget from thirty-two hundred to five thousand, for the interior and the dog celebration, uh, from the city. What, the city?
I'll say that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Kind of... Craving for a mini excavator. Somebody has been doing some really good work.
We, uh, we have a grant, uh, for a mini excavator, and that should be coming in in September. And, uh, we sold a lot of surplus equipment that's, uh, generated four thousand and three hundred, right? So we're looking to buy a trailer for the hall. So it's not a process, anything, the facility, uh, and stuff. I'll make a motion to approve the four-point Texas trailers' worth, it's five thousand six hundred ninety dollars.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance number twenty twenty-one, dash ten. This is an ordinance, uh, it's actually, I would say, amendment, existing ordinance, that, uh, regarding, uh, parking, city of Lake Butler. I guess you all have had a chance to review it. Uh, we've, we've got, not, uh, it would be wrong to say throughout, so, but we have, we have some areas within the city where there's a problem with right-of-way being obstructed to the point that through traffic, um, is delayed, obstructed, excuse me, uh, and a solution to that because, because the, the problem areas, the areas where vehicles you let park for days, weeks, in some cases, months or something like that. Uh, a solution to that problem, I think, is this ordinance. Because it prohibits parking on city right-of-ways between hours of eleven, you know, and six AM for more than thirty minutes. And of course, enforcement would be up to the sheriff's office. And the, if the ordinance is passed, people wouldn't be blindsided, because areas where it would fly, there would be signage on both directions. with black, there would be signage on both directions for that block coming in, uh, because the way the ordinance is written, the, the signage, you can do it for four, five, twenty blocks, it's each block stamped on it. It would, it would, it would help up the balance of streets being protected with, uh, it's a, it's another tool, a tool to, for the sheriff's office.
Well, I make a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty one dash ten, by Tyler.
Ordinance number twenty twenty one dash ten, an amendment to chapter forty six, streets, sidewalks and other public places to regulate the parking of motor vehicles within the city of Lake Tahoe, Florida for the safety and general welfare of citizens of Lake Tahoe, offering and providing severability with all ordinance in conflict and providing effective aid.
I'll say.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Department of Environmental Protection, state of evolving groundwater, that's what I have, grant.
Mayor, we've, uh, we've been notified that we are approved for a one point two million dollar grant and loan to design the main service collection of the wastewater. Remember a month or so ago, Nittler was here to talk about the service area, so, uh, all about those sewer lines that are connected, how poor they were, the DDP has heard that and so will give you a one point two million to get it designed, ready to go, two hundred thousand. Another big step fixing our infrastructure. It'll, it'll, it'll come back here in another month or so and you'll have to approve the law document. Usually it's for a one percent.
Number sixteen, city manager of the town.
Uh, I always, I might do this out, but this is uh what we've done the last three years. This just tells you what uh, what, what we've done and it's kind of fun to look back, but um, Dr. T said the secret of change is to focus all your energy, not fighting the old, but uh, so we don't look back, we look forward and uh, gather we're building that, that new idea, that new framework. So you all have been extremely valuable in that creation.
Number seventeen, resolution number twenty twenty one, there is a slab now, this is utility rates for the coming version three and that thing. That's just uh the rates for twenty one, twenty two. We talked about that uh in the first part of August, you know, the, basically it's a ten percent increase. It amounts to about four cents a day. I noticed, I was looking at it, I noticed, basically it goes up quite a bit, but there's other areas where the usual rates actually decrease. Uh, which, I guess, officer or in that, in the last. I didn't really, much of the reservation. Mm-hmm. Do you mind me, yes, I'm, I should refer to the Jack Resolution, uh, coming on, the resolution seven.
Mayor motions, did you make one? You want to say?
No, I need to, I need to, did you make a motion? You made a motion.
Okay.
Uh, we, by Tyler, resolution number twenty one, twenty, twenty one dash zero seven, resolution increasing the amount of charges to the water wastewater and solid waste utility rates, this would be a twenty twenty one, twenty two.
All in favor?
I need to get a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Change for, uh, the, 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 the wastewater, the waste, the water.
So last year, uh, the auditors broke out the water wastewater and solid waste. The prior years it had, the one plant is a proprietary plant. Before they had it, uh, broken out and there's three separate plants only, it's a preliminary. Well, they did it this year and it took all the money from the water plant, put it in the wastewater, which affected, means went to affect all of our loans and grants that we jacked them out of the water. So my request is to shift it back to fifty thousand from the wastewater to the water, so they move this out of there. I'll make a motion to transfer one hundred fifty thousand dollars from the wastewater fund to the water plant.
Say? All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes?
American Rescue Plan, this is the uh, uh, amount of money that we're going to get from the uh coronavirus global fiscal recovery fund agreement. Uh, it's nine hundred and three thousand, five hundred and forty, they will have half this year, half next year and it's, it normally we use for specific things, it's very narrow and uh we recommend that we invest in, uh, invest in the infrastructure, keep building, we won't have to seek other grants or other debt.
Roughly, we'll begin with about four.
About four fifty this year and four fifty next year. Yeah, but that money, which actually can be used on infrastructure, that money can be used in part to pay one to four months.
And now, they're not going to let you do that part, they will, they'll let you uh replace those stations or, or things, they're not going to let you pay loans.
Well, when I was thinking that, there's a lot, there's a, specifically for four months.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
You mean towards like roads and anything like that?
Like what?
Like roads, like roads, you know?
Yeah.
Okay, got it.
In case specific, talk about water, wastewater.
Make sure I understand. So we need to make a motion to accept the money?
And to use it for uh infrastructure.
Okay, I make a motion that you accept the money from the American Rescue Plan Act and authorize the city manager to kind of document and be used for the infrastructure.
Say.
Of city level.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes? Report for the city attorney.
I don't have anything additional, thank you.
The city manager.
Uh, you have my, uh, my letter of report and um, we're in the process of getting ready for a public hearing for the budget, it will be September fourteenth. Fourteenth and then adopt on the twenty first, something like that. Uh, we're looking to uh, once the weapons get done, gets done and we'll deal with that straight. It was probably moving into making that question. Draw approval. The water meters are all in, grants, book, and we'll get a, get some tests, we'll walk away from that one. Other than that, that's all I got.
Commissioner Sherman, if you got anything to offer us? Mr. Redd?
Uh, I make the, farm share should be September the.
Eleven.
The second, yeah. Oh, they were, um, they were sorry that they were unable to make this one, but, but had other, uh, agency to come through for this one, so. City, I mean, I think the people were able to.
Yeah. The meeting that's posted, uh.
The church and regular, getting something and, uh, Christ sent you.
Christ sent you.
That's all I have.
Mr. Beasley, I don't have anything. Mr. Steele? The only thing I've got is um, is anybody, if anybody knows anybody that was inside the city of Lake Tahoe, preferably somebody who owns property in the city of Lake Tahoe, that would have any interest in serving on the historical preservation board. If you would please refer their name to me, I'll be willing to communicate and talk to them, let them know what it's all about and hopefully gain some interest. We have three people who do five. We, we get five or more rest employees, the city manager will bring that to Cal Street, vote on to agree with this, pretty, they're appointed. Other than that, I've got nothing. All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?